I call to the order this regular meeting of the City Planning Commission on Tuesday, January 23, 2018. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sorry. Very speedy trip up here from downtown meeting. All right, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Kapalansky?
Here.
Murad?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Jadel?
Here.
Kempner?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Tengari?
Here.
Barnett?
Present.
Buckler?
Yes. Here. All right, can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any comments? No? Mr. McLean?
Call the roll.
Shut the door. Yeah.
Murad? Yes. Richardson?
Yes.
Jadel?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tengari?
Still here.
Barnett?
Yes.
And Buckler?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes. All right. So we have two different minutes to approve in our regular scheduled meeting. We have the December 12 minutes, so we'll take them independently. Can I get a motion to approve the December 12 minutes?
So moved.
Any seconds?
Second.
Any comments?
I'm sorry.
The December 12 minutes.
I have a motion.
Murad?
Yep.
Kapalansky? Are there any comments? They're fairly thorough. I frankly couldn't, I mean, most of them seemed familiar to me, but I didn't have any comments personally. Anybody? Yep, all right. Call the roll.
Richardson?
Yes.
Jadel?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tengari?
Yes.
Buckler?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Okay. The January 9 minutes, do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Motion a second? Any comments?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Smith?
On page four, the very bottom point. As Commissioner Smith suggested reducing the number of townhomes, that was actually Commissioner Murad. I wholeheartedly agreed, but it was actually Commissioner Murad had that idea.
All right. Did you pose the question of rooftop or individual HVAC units?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll have to put another bullet point there.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Do we need to amend the motion to approve with correction?
I don't think so.
Nope, all right. Call the roll.
Kempner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Tengari?
Yes.
Kapalansky?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Jadel?
Yes.
And Buckler?
Yes. All right, communications. We have an email and we have a copy of the Redevelopment Ready Communities requirements and we have a copy of the Michigan Association of American Planning Association, or American Planning Association Michigan Chapter Training. We have a current copy of the Berkeley Sign Ordinance, which I requested, as well as a copy of the City Grand Rapids Sign Ordinance as comparison, which I requested. Are there any other communications?
None at this time.
All right. So we're done with that. All right, citizen comments? We're not going to be taking citizen comments through our discussion of the one item on the agenda, so now is your time to come up to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence and please keep your comments to under four minutes or less. Thank you.
Kurt Hite, Berkeley, Michigan. I wanted to finish discussing the traffic study and why the study should not be, should be considered faulty. In the study, it was mentioned a large volume of traffic generated by the former use of the site, but nowhere did it take into consideration the other three schools in close proximity, two of which would have generated just as much, if not more, traffic in the same area that would be most heavily impacted by this proposed PUD. The Planning Commission refused to ask for a study to be done during the school year despite residents talking about how bad the traffic was currently and how much worse it would be in the future if the PUD is built. The study determined that the area would see very little impact from the development since they graded the adjacent intersections so highly. Had they done this study during the school year, I have no doubt that these intersections would have been graded a lot differently. During a recent school day, I counted cars on Harvard at East Coolidge going eastbound and westbound. There were 67 cars going eastbound, which is 23 cars or 53 percent higher than the 44 cars going eastbound that they claimed would be seen during the peak hour during the school year. There were 149 cars going westbound. That is 123 cars or 575 percent higher than the 26 cars that they said would be going westbound during the peak AM hours of the school year. The city paid for a traffic study that was done by someone who failed to take into account all of the variables. The money that was wasted on the study was bad enough, but it made it worse because so many people refused to see the mistake. Now during the public hearing last week, the developers, or a couple weeks ago, developers finally told him he was missing a substantial number of documents. Looking at what was submitted with the app was a lot of missing or inaccurate information, so this has left us with many questions. In August, why did four commissioners vote yes to recommend this PUD to the council knowing that there was missing documents or information that was actually supplied was inaccurate? Why has the process been allowed to continue for over eight months knowing these documents were missing or inaccurate? Why was the applicant allowed to apply twice without the required documents? And then why did the developer seem to believe that the document requirements had been waived? Had the vote passed in August, what would you have based the recommendation on? Because we know that there was missing, many missing documents and we know what was provided was inaccurate. Since March, the burden of researching and discovering the scope of these issues have fallen squarely on the shoulders of the residents. This has included finding some of the many errors in the limited paperwork that has been provided. I hope to see that this stops because this is not supposed to be our job. We didn't volunteer to do it, but it's really, it's becoming taxing and we're being looked at as bad guys. It's not that we don't want to see development. We've actually made suggestions about things that we would like to see, things that we could see how even what's proposed, how it could fit, but nobody wants to hear that. All they want to do is say about how we don't want to see this area developed and how we're supposedly stopping people from talking, but you know, last time I checked, we're not the ones that insult the residents that got demoted, got removed from this commission. You know, we want to see the development. We want to see proper development and we just hope to hear that, hope to see that, you know, it's being, it's not going to be taken serious, all the conditions, all the issues that are wrong with this PUD. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the interests of complying with the Open Meetings Act, I would like to open the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, it was just because of the vacuum.
I won't open it all.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anybody else? Citizen comments? All right. All right, order of business. We have one order of business on tonight's agenda, so this brings me back to 2015, 2014, when we probably have half of our meetings with no site plan reviews and looking for things to put on the agenda. So we have a lot of things in our, let's call them parking lot, for lack of a better term, that have been put by the wayside for the past two years because of other pressing matters. And they're kind of tedious things, but they need to be dealt with and they need to be dealt with as we prepare for a revamp of the master plan. There are some new efforts on behalf of the city with respect to the redevelopment ready communities, the potential of a main, you know, the Main Street program or whatever we're going to do there, but there are things that have been kind of sitting on the wayside where we're like, we'll get to those, we'll get to those, we'll get to those. So Tim has been kind enough, working with staff to pull together kind of a list of things, and this is an opportunity too for the planning commissioners for things that have come up over the past year that we haven't had time or energy to address because of more pressing issues. So now is your opportunity to help create a work plan for 2018 that we hope to be able to get to and set our priorities. So in that spirit, there's a couple of things that have come out, which I can recall, and Tim, you went back, I know, through some of our city meetings and pulled some of those issues and then we'll open up to the Planning Commission to talk about some of the issues that each individuals wanted. But there's things like our sign ordinance, which needs to be updated. There's things about our downtown development districts that need to be maybe updated or discussed at the very least, maybe not updated, but discussed. And Tim, there was a couple other things that popped up. Do you want to go over those?
Well, I know there was, I did get quite a bit of feedback from planning commissioners regarding a public participation plan.
Okay.
And that goes heavily with some of the best practices through the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program.
Okay. And I have a list of questions on that. So I thought before we start talking about the work plan, we would spend just a couple minutes for each commissioner to talk about like kind of what's on their priority list. We can help compile that from Tim and then winnow it down from there and then kind of create a calendar for the year to put something through the year that gives us an opportunity to devote the time and resources because staff will have to do some background research for us on some of these items because we're not at the ready on each item. So let's start with Mr. Smith. You always have a.
Well, interestingly enough, I don't have a whole lot of comments.
Okay.
To me, it's pretty obvious what's on our, what we need to do. We have a master plan update, which I believe we're falling behind on or we're getting, no, we have time. I take that back.
I think we have time.
No, we have time. But we want to get into the master plan update and you know, depending on, I don't know to what extent we want to do that yet, that's open for future discussion. There's obviously a lot of zoning ordinances, you already mentioned that, that need things. Apparently in that, from the last couple of meetings, we need to add some definitions or source some definitions. There's been quite a few things that have been bugging me for years, but so that needs to be done in various ordinance sections and we all know that some sections need rewriting. They're probably from 40, 40, 50 years old, some of them I would imagine. So you know, I don't have any specifics and then this redevelopment ready communities, I'd like to get an overview of that, a little bit more of an overview of that because I'm not familiar with that program. I read the material, but, so I don't really have anything specific, but I think those are the big things and we, I think we all know they're the obvious things we have to start working on.
Okay. Mr. Richardson?
Well, I don't think I have any bullet points to add to this list. I think most of my thoughts are captured in these bullet, bullet points. For example, I really want to revisit the language of the PUD ordinance and work on better language for the PUD ordinance. I'm sure there's other ordinances in our zoning code that can, like Commissioner Smith said, that can use some work and revision too. This may tie in with the redevelopment ready community issue, but just in terms of my priorities, and again, I think this falls under the master plan update, but my priorities are sustainable development base, if you want to use that old term. And I'd like to see us think about ways to more closely integrate green initiatives with the capital improvement plan that we review, we sit and review once every year, but we know that that's an ongoing process and we want to incorporate modern sustainability principles to our capital improvement program, I think. This is general right now. I'm not going to get down into the weeds of it, but I'd like to see some more coordination there and it may well be an element of the redevelopment ready communities program that we, that we do that, we take steps along that line. I'm not sure what is or anything else. Complete streets are policies, another example of something we should look at integrating into the planning process a little more carefully, at least look at it. So I think these bullet points do capture the things I've just mentioned. I don't have anything major to add to this outline. I think we get to those things when we begin to dig into these, to these tasks under our work plan.
Okay. Kapalansky?
I have a couple of things to add. Generally, I think it might be beneficial to kind of lay out our priorities in terms of these four items. Obviously, the public participation plan fits in with the redevelopment ready communities. It's my understanding as well, Tim, that the redevelopment ready communities, I think once you get a quarter of the way through the process, there's some sort of funding available to help you accomplish some of the tasks that are in there. So I don't know if we could look at having that potential funding be put towards the master plan update to help us with those consultant fees. And in looking at the master plan update, it's my opinion, and it might just be mine alone, but that the entire master plan has to be redone, not just a general update of demographics in a select few sections, but completely rewritten. The city of Ferndale has a really, a really innovative and interesting master plan. It touches a lot on sustainability, so I think it would be something worth taking a look at. It's very readable. As far as the public participation plan, there's a couple examples that are out there. Some of them are 15 pages, some of them are just two or three pages. I don't think it has to be anything extensive, but it would be good to have our practices kind of laid out to see what we can do for that. The ordinance review, I hate to say this, but I think the ordinance needs to be completely rewritten too.
I was being polite.
You know, a lot of communities are moving towards ordinances that are a lot more user friendly, easy for the public to read, lots of graphics. So it would be good to get something like that. If we can't go that far in terms of what kind of budget we have available, then it would at least be good to go section by section and completely reorganize it and also look at some of our adjacent communities and surrounding communities and see what kind of elements they have included that maybe we don't. I would like to see more administrative reviews and approvals, accessory structures as an example, or small additions. It might be worth it to have our city attorney go through the ordinance and just flag things that may, maybe not, are not up to date with current case law. For example, I'm just looking at this sign ordinance and I'm noticing we still have off premises, off premise advertising signs in here. It's my understanding that has to all be content neutral now, so you can't identify things like that. So it might be worth it just to have him go through and kind of flip, excuse me, flag those sorts of items. I don't know, I have a lot of thoughts on all these things, but that's just kind of my starting point.
And Tim, before I get to you, so a question is on the, with our attorney, has there any, any communities that have gone through kind of traditional ordinances like ours and already done that flagging of things that are?
So as, in my experience, as the communities are going to this more graphic, user-friendly ordinance, they're having a planning consultant do those sorts of things for them and then run it by the city attorney.
Okay.
But if we are not able to go to that, because I know it's quite expensive to reorganize it in that fashion, there's, I think our city attorney could at least make, you know, a bullet point list of things that we need to check.
Sure. Okay. All right, Mr. Murad?
So yeah, the, let's see, I joined the Planning Commission about 12 years ago, so prior to that, there was the PUD ordinance and I agree, it does need to be re-reviewed and updated. Same with the master plan. I think I joined just as the final steps of the master plan were being done. I think I was on the commission when it was adopted, so that definitely needs to be updated and maybe we do need to have, do a full rewrite. I'm not sure. And yeah, I'd like to find out more about this redevelopment ready program. I'd like to have like schedule a presentation or something, even if it has to be during a work session, I'd be fine with that. And so in regards to prioritizing this, you know, I don't know the best way to do that, but all, to me, all these things are priorities, so.
Okay.
But, and I agree with Commissioner Kapalansky that ordinance could probably be something that we could really focus on and maybe it's a couple year project, you know, so, because it's not going to be done in one year. So probably not. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Barnett?
Well, some of my members here have already startled my thunder. The ordinances is the big one. I think the zoning ordinance is the biggie on the white elephant in the room right now. It needs to be updated to the building codes and state law and whatever else it needs, but it needs serious look at because you're right, Mr. Smith, I don't think it's been looked at since, well, it hasn't been looked at all the time I've been here, so, and it was all them, so it really needs to be.
Sections are.
Sections we have looked at.
Parts and bits and pieces.
Parts and bits and pieces, but overall, it needs to be brought into coordination with the building code and every state law and everything else. So it needs a good, serious look at. Master plan update, I think there's, there's sections that we have to add to the master plan that are nowhere in sight in their infrastructure. We got to deal with that. Transportation, environmental issues, all of that now has to go into the master plan and so as we go through that process, that's going to be an interesting thing that we're going to have to do. So the big question is, do you look at ordinances before you look at the master plan or do you do the master plan and look at ordinances? I don't know. I'd kind of like to look at ordinances, but, because I think we are seriously lacking a few cases on that.
I think we've talked about ordinances a little bit for the last couple of years.
Yeah, we've been talking about it and I was hitting Amy over the head about it, several times about it. And so it's, that's my biggie actually for the evening.
Okay. Jadel?
You know, I too agree. I think this, this covers things. I mean, the ordinance, clearly there's, there's been several, several items that have come up throughout our meetings in the last couple of years that have been identified that we need to, we need to review and I think, I absolutely believe that it needs to be made a lot more user friendly for everyone, so anything that we can do to create that, I think would certainly be beneficial. The master plan, I believe, does need a major overhaul. I'm not sure that I'm in favor of completely scrapping it and starting over. It's a little scary process, I think, but, but I do believe it does need a, it does need a major overhaul and it's going to take quite a bit of time to do that. RRC as well, I'm not familiar with, looking forward to learning about that, but I think the public participation plan, to me, I think regardless of what we do and how we move forward, I think that transparency and the communication has got to be foremost and it's critical, I think, regardless of how we move forward and what direction we move forward. I think that that's just, it has to, it's a critical piece. To me, it's actually the most important piece of all of this because without that, I think it'd be difficult for us to move forward in the most productive way, so.
Mr. Tengari?
Right, I'm finding myself pretty much in agreement. I mean, I think before we consider doing a master plan, and I, I agree that at the very least, a major overhaul is called for. I think the public participation plan has to come first. I think we have to be upfront about how we're going to be engaging the public going forward before we get involved in a master plan process, which should include a robust public input element. And the zoning ordinance, I, you know, I work with a dozen zoning ordinances in my day job. I should, before I go any further, I should say, I'm a professional planning consultant and I want to be clear that anything I'm about to say is in no way an endorsement of products that are offered by the consultancy, consulting firm that I work for. But our zoning ordinance has, well, I mean, zoning ordinances, they get like the, you know, the old joke of the guy in the ski resort who's completely covered in bandages. That's pretty much what a zoning ordinance becomes over the decades because it's just Band-Aid, 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 as we try to fix little problems here and there that we didn't foresee when the ordinance was first written. And eventually, you got to take all those bandages off and rebuild the person underneath, you know. It, it has organizational and structural issues. It has actual regulatory issues. It has clarity of language issues. It has illustrations in it that are barely legible and it has illustrations in it that don't really show what they're supposed to show. I was looking at the non-conforming building illustration in there and it doesn't show a non-conforming building. It shows a different building from the buildings around it, but without applying zoning ordinance standards to that building, you have no way of knowing if it's non-conforming. So there's lots of things in there like that, that really need a look. And I've got a huge, long list of these things that I will not torture you with this evening. But in general, sustainability could be much stronger, lighting. I'd like to see us address landscaping and trees at all, which we don't right now. I mean, we really have nothing. And those are community character issues as well, you know.
I think parking too.
Yeah, oh yeah, I think we need to really look at parking as well. I mean, there's, there's hardly an issue we don't need to look at. But, but really, I think that it's an essential project and it needs to happen soon and you know, there will be certain elements. A master plan adopted in the state of Michigan now needs to include a zoning plan, which gives you a path forward towards zoning amendments that will help you come into compliance with your master plan. But our ordinance is so far past the point where it needs major work that we can't afford to wait for a master plan to be complete.
Right.
To start working on it.
Right.
I mean, we, there are things that we already know are problems, so I say damn the torpedoes and full speed ahead on that. Let's just do it.
Amen.
And you know, the, the master plan, of course, is going to come too. The sign ordinance obviously also needs some work. I agree with the legal issue analysis that was brought up earlier. I did a quick tonight before I came to the meeting, review of the ordinance for conflicts with the Religious Land Uses and Institutionalized Persons Act, and I actually was pleasantly surprised that there really aren't any conflicts with that act, which is a very common one that for zoning ordinances to be in conflict with. But there's plenty of other things like wireless towers and things that, there's lots of legislation that's occurred over the last few years and we really need to make sure that we're up to date with all of that. Yeah, I mean, otherwise, I don't have anything much beyond that. The RRC process, I think, is a valuable one for communities to go through. I've done a lot of technical assistance work for RRC through my, my day job, working on zoning ordinances and downtown plans and things like that. And I, it really does bring value to communities. The, the technical assistance funding that's been added to the program in the last couple of years makes it a lot more valuable than it initially was. And it also, one of the things that you'll do in a master plan if you're trying to be compliant with RRC is you'll identify sites that are particularly ripe for redevelopment. And I think we, everybody in this room could probably think of one offhand, and it allows you to kind of do some area planning for those sites and it gets you ahead of the curve on those particular sites that are most ripe for redevelopment. So another way in which I think it could benefit us, really.
Ms. Kempner?
I, yeah, I definitely think that our master plan needs a lot of help and as well as our zoning ordinances, but I hate to put one off for the other. Like both are very long processes, so to totally hold off on one to concentrate on another is going to put us behind the game. I dug really heavily into the RRC site today and I think if we're following that and really digging into that process, most, a lot of this will fall into place. They have some great ideas on community engagement, you know, they want a fairly new master plan, they talk about ordinances, so I think as we're working through that, some of this will kind of find where it needs to be. But I think if we're working on, on a master plan, maybe we can start piecemealing some of those ordinances a little bit at a time and start getting through those.
It would be important to take an initial, initial sweeping look at the ordinance and try to prioritize areas to work on first.
Sure.
So it's my experience with this board or commission, sorry, that. that we can get into the weeds and stay there for a while on some of the technical details of things. And actually, it's important that we do that on occasion, because those things matter in the long run. They matter that we've put... That we've contemplated how many different rat holes there are to follow and what the potential outcome could be. And so ordinances, it's pretty easy to sit up here and say like, well, the master plan is no goo... You know, the master plan has aged and/or the ordinances need major update. But mind you, that was a great deal of thought and participation that went into all of those documents. And at the time that they were done, they were relevant, and they were accepted, and they were with the times. So times have changed. We have to upgrade them. That doesn't mean that they're not good. That means that we've grown, and we've matured, and we need to move on into something different. So, exactly. It does take time. It would be nice if we had the finances and the resources to just overhaul all of this with somebody guiding the ship, but we aren't going to have that. I mean, we have staff. We have some limited consulting fees. We might be able to get some additional fees through this RRC, right, redevelopment-ready community program. But still, it's going to fall on us to make sure that it is prioritized. We get what's important out there, that we get the best deal we can and get it through. It will not be 100% complete and perfect. There's a lot of opinions on everything that will be done. And we have to make sure that we're looking at the future of Berkeley. And there's a lot of challenges in Berkeley, in the community of our size and our type. With that, Tim, are you sure you still want this job?
You've got to comment.
As everybody went around, and I want... You brought up funding, and I was thinking about that. Do we have any funding in place? Because a master plan can be a fairly expensive ordeal. Zoning, we can deal with it, but there's still money involved. But master plan can be a big deal.
I'm going to have to spend a little bit of time reviewing what we have budgeted. Just thinking out loud, if we enlist the services of a consulting firm for a master plan, maybe we can tie it in together with ordinance and then maybe get a little more bang for our buck.
Some of this.
I think the last time we did the... Last time we did the plant master plan, I think it was like we spent almost $60,000.
That was what, 15 years ago? And that was a wholesale change. The master plan we have looks very simple, but that was a wholesale change for what we had before. What we had before looked like an ordinance. And what we have here is really... And we're look... From what I hear, another wholesale change or taking the next step.
A wholesale change with an increased public participation actually makes it more expensive, which is good, because we have the public participation. But that increases cost, because now we have a lot... It increases time. And in consulting, time is money.
And I would also like to see some more coordination and interaction with the DDA, because they're doing a lot of things on 12 Mile and Coolidge, which is exactly what the master plan wants to do. And I know that we, you know, I've been to a couple of their open houses and things over the last few months. But I don't think we have a... We don't have a consistent discussion between us.
I don't think... I think you're correct. And I do think there's maturation or whatever the word I want to use is. There's a change in the downtown character of Coolidge and 12 Mile over the past 10 years and a forward view of what it could be. And that requires our input, because there are some things that are going well, and there's some things that we want to kind of maybe think about nipping in the bud before they change the character of that downtown, you know, of what a downtown could be and to make it as most robust, beautiful downtown as possible. That increases traffic, foot traffic, of course, tax revenue, and, you know, bringing people into the community and all of those, you know, things rolled together. So we have to think about what that looks like and what that looks like for the new... For the next 20, 30 years, or at least 20. Because our master plan is good for 10, but by the time they get around to renewing it or they do it wholesale again.
You usually look at it 20 or even 21.
But we're had... The planning commission is for master plan and the DDA for their areas there. We're going down the same path.
Yes, well, we hope.
But we're a little bit... Yeah, well, we are. But that's what you... We hope. I'd like to get more interaction, so we are more aware of what they're doing. And they're... Maybe they need to be more aware. Maybe they're keeping up with what we're doing.
And there's things they're going to want from the master plan, too, that we have in there. And there's just going to think... There's things that I would assume that they're going to want from ordinances to ensure their vision. And there's things that they may want that we don't want to give. I mean, there's all... It all... It's... There's a lot on the plate, so...
I've got a couple of comments on this, too. Having been on the DDA 15 years ago, and when the planning commission was starting the master plan discussion, the DDA talked about doing a downtown master plan to supplement it. And we never had the funds at that time to do it. So that might be something to consider, okay?
Yeah, that's why I meant they're working on that right now.
And the other thing, too, is council soon. I think in a month or so, we'll start to get into budgeting, because our budget runs July through June. So maybe we can get them to put some things on the budget for starting in July to help us with master plan, ordinance rewrite, things like that, too.
Finance has delivered our budget worksheets. And that's going to be right around the corner, so I'm going to be jumping on that sooner rather than later.
So the timing of some of this could be good.
And I'm sure our new council liaison will be flexing his muscles and helping you out for the sake of this commission.
Hopefully, give us a nice, large budget.
The first item on the master plan update that you know the staff will work to develop an RFP for consultants to work with the city on its master plan update. My question is, and I don't know, because I wasn't here for the RFP for the last master plan, does planning commission get a say in what that RFP looks like? Do we see it in draft before it goes out?
We will see it in draft.
So, Mr. McLean, when do you expect to have an RFP ready in draft for us to look at?
I can start working on a timeline with Mr. Baumgarten soon.
Yeah, we looked at it and made comments on it, and it went before it went home.
Okay, very good. So we will get that.
One thing I'll note, you know, while we're talking about all this, is that the DDA's design committee is actually looking at the sign ordinance to kind of figure out if there's any recommendations that it wants to make. So those might come our way sometime soon.
And that... I had heard that the city of Grand Rapids was one of the kind of model ordinances, although much larger, of course. But no, I mean, but there's some good things in there. And so I pulled that for tonight, along with ours, just to make some comparison if we got to that point, but also to give the commissioners some reading material for later. But, you know, clearly, I mean, there's things that we're not going to have to deal with in our city. But there were some good things in there when I read through it that I thought were, you know... And it had been updated recently, so there's nothing wrong with a little plagiarism in those kind of situations.
I think a foot candle is a foot candle, you know, in Grand Rapids and here. There's really no difference.
It's going to be the same foot candle.
True. And I think we went through that on lighting, kind of exhaustively.
I don't think there are foot candles anymore with the...
Do you not recall the issue on... It was the church on Catalpa, remember the sign? And then there was the sign on...
But aren't they knits now instead of foot candles?
We went back and forth, like, what is a knit? What is a foot candle?
The physics is a little different.
And what is... How far do you go? And what was... It was a lot of minutia on that. All right. So the second item that you presented to us on our agenda was the redevelopment-ready communities. So I had a few questions for you, Mr. McLean, on this. So you mentioned that the training is an essential requirement for redevelopment-ready communities program. So who goes through the training? Who's required to go through the training? Who makes the call and who's required to go through the training? And then who commits the resources to this? Does this have to come from city council? Is this clearly within the purview of staff?
Well, what will happen is administrative staff should go through the best practices training. In my previous role, I'd gone through the best practices training. It's been over a year, so I feel like a refresher, you know, for myself would be important. I believe the city manager would be attending those trainings with me as well. I think it'd be valuable for at least one or two members of the planning commission to attend. I mean, it wouldn't be mandatory, but I think in order to have the level of buy-in that we need, I think it'd be valuable for planning commissioners to attend. The DDA director has conveyed interest in attending those trainings. Once you've done all six of the best practices training, there's a self-assessment that's required. You review existing plans. You answer a lot of yes-no questions. Does your community do this? And then you submit it to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. They will review the self-assessment. And then they will issue kind of a report of findings, you know, things you need to do to meet the best practices, to be RRC certified. It can be a lengthy process, but the good news is, once you get that report, MEDC does not just throw you to the wolves and say, here you go. They walk with you and assist with meeting those best practices. I believe one of the commissioners did have a question about a presentation, and I believe I should be able to arrange some type of presentation from a member of MEDC that I think would be very beneficial.
So with request... With respect to this assessment, the self-assessment, I assume, would be done by city manager and yourself? It wouldn't be done by us as the participants of the training?
That's correct.
Like, it would be a single assessment for Berkeley?
Yes. Yes. In my last role, it was myself and the DDA director completed the assessment. We had considerably less staff in my last role.
Understand, understand. All right. And then...
Excuse me. Will you be looking for a couple of volunteers from the planning commission to...
Absolutely, yes.
Well, they're free, the planning... Or for the training.
Right, but it's a couple of days. It's a couple of days, too.
It's two different days. And the dates he gave us right now are just for parts one and three. Was there a second page?
And then they should do... I try to keep them, you know, as close to home as possible.
Oh, okay. So RC Lansing was the fourth, March 8th?
January 25th and then March 8th.
So there must be additional four, five, and sixes after that.
Yeah. The March 8th is the four, five, and six.
Mr. McLean, can you register one or more of us?
Oh, yes, yeah. Anybody who wants to go, let me know, and I can let me know when. And I'd be happy to get you registered. I've actually taught the training on the first two modules. I can't guarantee the presenters will be as scintillating as I was. But...
I want to go if you're not.
But I, you know, even if you've been doing this for a while, you will learn a lot. It's a very information-dense presentation.
So the RRC best practice one, the community plans and public outreach. Mr. McLean, could you find some example plans of this that perhaps the RRC has or some of the communities have participated in this? Could you maybe provide... You don't have to print them for us. You could just provide us a link or two to some examples, so we can get an idea of what that looks like.
Yes, absolutely.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. And then the ordinance review. You mentioned in your notes that to work with subcommittees. So I, to my knowledge, have not been... Have had any subcommittee work since I've been on the commission. So Marty, you've been on the lo... David and Marty have been on the longest. Have you guys used subcommittees in the past? Okay? And you found that a satisfactory way to do this or...
Yeah, yeah. There's advantages to talking about in a small group. Of course, it's brought to the whole commission. Yeah, yeah.
We did parking. I did. I ran over parking.
We did parking.
We did parking and we did signage.
We also did a residential assessment where we broke up into...
Well, we all did that, yeah. That was huge, yeah. It was a subcommittee of nine.
We walked the entire city.
Actually, 10.
We walked the entire city. Covered all in the whole city.
We actually did physically walk.
Walked every block. All 51 miles.
Everybody was given a certain few blocks, and we walked them and talked about it and took notes.
Subcommittees can be a good way of ironing out major issues before it comes before the full commission. So you can... It can make the process quicker and smoother in that regard. You know, the other thing I think that would be helpful is if we're... Let's say we take three issues at a time or something. If the planning commission could outline some basic guiding principles up front, that's going to help tailor the process to a regulation that actually does what it's supposed to do, you know?
That was my thought, is we need to have some... I mean, this is a lot of, I'll call it cat herding, for lack of a better term. And I think that we have to figure out how to set that priority. And if we do subcommittees, what we establish up front, their narrow focus, their deliverable and their timeline, because everybody's time is valuable. And we... If they can't work through it in the timeline, then it's, you know, maybe it was too big of a chunk. So it might be a slightly iterative process. But that's something, I guess, Mr. McLean, I would look to you to kind of carve out what you think would work best in that. And then we'll set that... And then we can prioritize them from up here and say, yep, we want to start with this, these three, these six, these nine. And we'll break into groups. And unfortunately, you'll get role as cat herder for most of them, because you are the neutral party here.
I signed up for all of it.
I get it, I get it.
And, Mr. McLean, I would tap into Mr. Tengary, Ms. Kapalinski. I mean, that's what this... This is what they do, if they're able to help out. You know, we've put bandages on the zoning ordinance. But I don't write zoning ordinances for a living, very allied to that. But the people who actually have worked... If you're volunteer or interested, you'll tap into your knowledge.
I will also volunteer. I actually have written zoning ordinances in my past life. It's been a while. Probably from the era of the zoning ordinance we have, so maybe I won't be that much help.
It's your fault, Mark. That's what you're saying. It's all your fault.
I think it goes way beyond...
I'm joking. It's nobody's fault. And there, you know...
Well, it's Mark's fault.
And I think it's important to note that the fact that we recognize the need to change these does not... Is... We're not being anywhere critical of the work that has been... That has come before us, because that is work that was done at the time, in a time and place, with forces on it. And it is impossible to recreate those, to identify what those forces were. So we can't look at them over our shoulder and say like, well, you should've, should've, should've. It's you can't. You know, you're up here. You're dealing with what you're given at hand, with the resources you have and the powers that you have and the timing that you have. So I think all that work was good, but I think our collective agreement that some change needs to be made, and we have the time to do it right now. Something may come and distract us. But for now, this is it.
Put the plan into place.
That's right. So, that being said, I think... I mean, we're not ready to get into any kind of detail in anything tonight. We've all voiced our opinion on what we think are the priorities. So now that we have Mr. McLean, who was that position, whatever its title was, was sorely missed for some time for us.
We can move forward.
We can move forward. So you know our collective feelings on that.
Yes. Yeah, your feedback tonight has given me some direction. And to answer your question earlier about if I'm ready to do all this, absolutely, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and dive right in.
So I think the first step we would like to see from you, at least in my opinion, is... Ms. Kapalinski mentioned the city of Ferndale's master plan that she felt was kind of a good model. I'd like to see... We'll start with master plan, and we'll go to ordinance in a minute. Let me finish one thing at a time. The... I'd like to see maybe kind of five model master plans. And they... Those suggestions can come from the commission members, as well as from yourself, Mr. McLean, who's former networked in that community than I am, that are maybe some good examples for similarly sized communities, similarly aged communities, similarly challenged communities.
We did that as a starting point.
Kind of benchmarking.
Yeah, we did that.
So recent... Something within that has been done within the last two years. And so that we... And please do not print these. They're giant documents. We can do them in an email. You can do them on our next agenda item with links and just suggest, so that we can kind of have a review of what you kind of feel is out there in the kind of best... best practice of master plan land, because I don't want to personally have to go review 40 of them to figure them out. And the same goes for kind of ordinances, again, you know, the city of Berkeley is, we're not unique, but we are different in that we have certain constraints. One, we don't have a lot of available land, we're, they're not going to make more Berkeley, and we have kind of an aging housing stock, a limited industrial.
I think we could conquer Beverly Hills.
Yeah. Well, we'd have to kind of cross that kitty corner of, well, I'm not even sure we reach up there, because we'd have to, we'd have to cross over Royal Oak and then get up there, or Southfield.
I was thinking of that.
Or Southfield.
Yeah, that little wedge of Royal Oak.
Southfield, and yeah, so it kind of gets a little messy when we get up to that green field thirteen mile area. So nonetheless, nonetheless, so there are, there are certain communities that are kind of inner ring communities that have similar challenges to us, so we'd maybe like to see some kind of ordinance structure that they've done, and again, Ms. Kapalansky and Mr. Tengary, who do this for a living, might feed in some ideas or knowledge in that area.
I would like to specifically dig up a couple plans from outside of Michigan.
Sure.
Because I find that the planning community in Michigan tends to be somewhat insular.
Sure.
So I think that seeing a couple documents from outside the state could actually be helpful, too.
Absolutely, and I think when you, when it comes to, like, including sustainability initiatives, I think you are right, there are some states that are kind of on the cutting edge.
California and Colorado.
Actually, Iowa, we need to look at a couple of communities in Iowa, there are some cutting-edge ones. All right, so that's your homework for us, Mr. McLean, on the, on those two topics, as well as providing us with a couple of examples of the public participation plan from the RRC best practice number one.
I can point you to Alligan and Lether Village, both have public participation plans.
I have a couple copies of some public participation plans, too, I can send along.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
So all of these, again, we want all of these in link form, or throw them in a Dropbox, because we don't want to have anything printed, and to deal with that, and particularly with, you know, we don't, we want to be more sustainable, so on those things, we can read them online, and if we want to print them at home, we can print them at home, but they will be available as part of our public documents. Okay, so that being said, that's our homework for the next agenda, which I assume we'll have more on it from a site plan review, I'm not sure, we'll see.
I have a couple more thoughts here.
Sure.
Looking at these, like I said earlier, I think they're all priorities, seeing that, you know, master plan, we got to look at funding, ordinance, we have to look at funding, so I would think really this redevelopment-ready community and public participation plan could be our focus initially, while we get those RFPs in order and stuff like that, and, not that I'd like to come to this meeting twice a month, but we do have a work session that we can utilize for some of this discussion.
Sure.
I have to.
I think, you know, especially if our regular meeting agendas are going to be looking to be very busy, I think we should take advantage of that, so that we're not delaying things.
Agreed. So once we have kind of some of the background documents, also, once we have an idea on what kind of some of the model ordinances that we want to shoot for, then we can prioritize our sections accordingly, and then bust up into work, or subcommittees for those, and we'll see how that goes. But we, I mean, we can't decide all that right here and now, we don't have enough information, so.
We used to, back in the day, work sessions, we had them almost monthly.
Yeah.
And I remember we probably took.
It hasn't, that has not been in the last five years.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking about fifteen, seventeen years ago, and I remember we took a couple months off in the summer, but we regularly met twice a week, or twice a month.
Is there any consideration from the other planning commissioners to having work sessions prior to this meeting, so we're not here for two separate nights, but instead here for just one night?
I have no problem.
Start, yes, starting at 6:30 or 6:00 PM or something like that.
Six o'clock.
That's a possibility, too.
I would have no problem with that, and I would prefer that over a second Tuesday night, because I have other commitments on Tuesdays.
I'm in the office pretty much from 5:00 till go time for our meetings anyway, so I'm available.
Well, Tim, you're going to be in the office for a lot longer with this workload that we've just given you, so I'm sorry to your new wife.
She's happy to have me out of the house.
I get that.
Yeah, she gets to keep you.
I get that as a wife, exactly. She gets Game of Thrones. All right, all right, so.
Before we move on, I guess, I have one, one question I wanted to poll the planning commission on. You've talked about not printing out all these documents, I wanted to poll the planning commission on their thoughts on going paperless with, with our agendas, with our packets.
I'll speak on that first. So I've had experience with paper and paperless packets, and something that kind of falls in between. I like paperless packets. The plans get a little bit hard to read, so it's nice to have a printout of just the plans, but I prefer paperless, but in communities where I've, I've worked with paperless packets, we've either brought an iPad to the meeting, or at the dais, there's a computer there for us to use, so I don't know, again, what kind of funding is available to provide those sorts of tools.
And I can look to see with, with our IT department, see what we have available in terms of, you know, laptops that we have, you know, with storage, or iPads that we're not using. I just kind of calculated some rough numbers, looking at packets that we printed last year, the paper alone was about $100 worth of paper, to say nothing of the ink costs, the staff time to put them together. I had a very productive meeting with some of the planning staff with the city of Troy the other day, and they gave me a lot of ideas, you know, they've gone totally paperless, and I'm looking at maybe changing the way we accept site plans to going more towards electronic submission. I'd like to develop, you know, some checklists for things that an applicant has to provide on a preliminary site plan before we'll even start to review it.
That's a great, great idea.
Well, I will tell you, I have some comments on that. Our, our office went paperless about 20 years ago, and we have more paper now than we know what to do with. I mean, we burned through it. I myself, I need drawings to look at, I can't, I am not going to function, try to flip through screens, because I don't know how everybody else reviews drawings, and apparently, they don't do it the same way I do, but I have that set of drawings, it's three, five, 15 sheets, they're all over the dining room table, and I'm flipping through them, and that's, that's how I, you've seen them, they're red all over them. You can't, a lot of times, you can't do that paperless, and I don't mind if our documents, you know, can be electronic, but.
I agree with you on that. I agree with you.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to go entirely paperless with, with site plans, but as opposed to an applicant bringing in, you know, 18 sets, and, you know, the, the big 24 by 36s, I think we can maybe reduce.
I'm generally okay with 11 by 17 on doc, on site plans, there's some, if it's a large site that is too small, I would agree, and we probably need a larger plan, but I'm not sure we need eight plan, I mean, so let me, let me finish. I think there is a, there's a happy median in the site plan printout. I'm talking about things, any reference material, like even today, the reference from the RRC, or the RR, yeah, the RRC, like, these items, these could have been links in the agenda.
Or even just a PDF.
And the agenda can be emailed when you tell us that our packets are being picked up, and so that can just be a link, and you can link it to the Berkeley site where the agenda package is, you can link it to a Dropbox, it doesn't matter to me, or you can link it to its originating address, but I don't need this printed out, because this is going home into my very gigantic recycle multi-stream bin today, and, except for my notes, which then I scan and it goes into my shredder. The, I, I think we have to find a happy median, so if we can reduce some of this, like, I think my bag is last week's, which is only half of it, and it's this thick, but I.
Yeah, and I, and I know for myself, for last month's, or last meeting's packet, because of those 11 by 17 drawings, and the writing was so small, I ended up going on and looking at the online stuff, and you can zoom in and blow things up.
That's a big site to put an 11 by 17.
Yeah, it is.
If it was the nip and tuck, that's different.
That's exactly what I was going to say, last month was a perfect.
Half acre, or quarter acre.
But if you do send us PDFs, with PDFs, you can do markups, you can write on them, take circle things, and take notes on, on the actual.
So I think this is a developing kind of.
I agree that initially, let's start with, you know, stuff like this, I'm fine.
Yeah, I have just, I have, you know, some of the in-house, you know, procedures, I think I'd like to, you know, revisit and see if we can't streamline a little bit.
Can I say something? I, you know, I'm, I'm in agreement, basically, with what everybody's saying, but for my part, I, I, I do not review the site plans electronically very effectively, or very well, I just can't read all that tiny stuff on the computer, that's my problem, so is there a happy median? Yeah, I know you can blow it up, but then you lose perspective, and, and I don't like that, sorry.
And I'll add to that, and I said it before, it's not, reviewing a set of drawings is not a linear process.
I understand.
You're bouncing all over, so that's what you're saying.
I'm the same with, with some written documents, so, I mean, I'm, I'm still, like, I live half in the paper world, half in the electronic world, and I'm trying to get paperless, and we are technically paperless at my work, too, so I get it, but I still print things off, scribble on them, so. That's because we're old, Marty, it's not because we're.
Oh, I, I have no doubt, I have no doubt.
I'm not.
This doesn't have a lot to do with paperless packets, but the electronic plans kind of jogged my mind. You said you'd met with Troy's planning staff, and I know they have a lot of things that they're a little bit ahead of the curve on people, with people on, but I think they have a development status type map, and I know we have that at my day job, and it really helps aid in the transparency, and it's also somewhere a week ago to look at the plan sets, and we just, we just put them on there as a PDF, they're tagged to the site, you can see whether it's proposed, under construction, that's probably farther down the line, but adds to the list.
I was actually, I spent a lot of time looking at that today on, on their, their website, and I came away with a lot of really good ideas.
So I know their IT guy who does that, and the GIS and IT guy who does that.
I actually load up the plans myself, and it's so easy, it's a lot easier than you think it would be, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, I think having electronic packets makes it easier to just, if we're getting an electronic packet, it gets posted with the agenda on the website, and anybody who wants to can look at it, I mean, it's, it just, it opens things up a lot.
So I think we can try, start going with a little hybrid for now, so that plans are based, still big plan sheets on bigger sites, and all the ancillary stuff kind of gets done as a link, and if you want it, you can print it at home and whatnot, so, all right, let's kind of start with that, and I'll, I will give you some guidance along the way, and we'll get some input from the planning commission along the way, having the kind of packet draft before you print them to us a day or so in advance, we can give you that feedback, like, hey, we want to see this, hey, we don't need to see this, so, all right, we'll work with you. All right, so, on that note, we're going to move out of number one, 2018 work plan, into liaison reports. So we just met two weeks ago, I don't know if there's been any liaison meetings.
I did, the night after, and of course, I didn't bring my notes with me, but I can tell you.
Treasure hunt.
They're doing, their treasure hunt is kicking off, they're doing a, they're doing, coordinating a, like, an art exhibit type of project with the schools in February, starting planning already for the Art Bash, and, and their, their gift certificate program was a huge success, and they're going to continue that on, so, and the nice thing about that, too, is you can buy those gift certificates, I think, through the school board's website, and a percentage of the money goes to the schools, so.
Okay, excellent, good to know.
Doing a lot of partnering with the schools, so.
Any other committees or?
Environmental meets later this week.
I'm not the liaison, but I was at the city council meeting last night, Ms. Kempner, and the biggest deal there is that the two mil proposal for the roads, which is not a lot of money, it's about 1.2 million dollars a year, it's not going to go very far, but it is what it is. And then the.
Is that going to be on the ballot? Is that the plan?
Well, there's that, there's the.
Community center.
The community center, which they presented a week earlier, happened to be at that also.
City hall.
And then the city hall, they're going to put all three of them on the November ballot. So they were talking about May and August, but I remember they're, they're going to put them, propose all three at one time.
There'll be separate questions?
Oh, they're separate ballot items, but they were looking at, you know, do we push one soon, you know, push one into August or May, and the ultimate decision was they'll go on November.
Pull off the band and do it. I did watch that on TV last night. All right, any other liaison reports?
I already mentioned that the DDA design committee is looking at the sign ordinance, but the DDA is also looking at design guidelines for the DDA district, and that project is moving along pretty quickly, actually, it's, it's made a lot of progress, so.
Very good. Are there any other commissioner staff comments outside of what we talked about tonight? Just going to leave it for hands up here, instead of go around the table?
Actually, I have a comment, commissioner comment. So we had somebody get up today and speak during the public comments at the beginning, and in regards to that traffic study, the individual mentioned that the city paid for it, the city did not, the developer did, so just wanted to clarify that.
And I will remind everybody, I won't be here in February.
That's right.
Fourth Tuesday.
I might not be here.
Until my not either, so.
I'm taking a class, and I don't know if, it's Monday, Wednesdays, and I don't know if I will have enough time between to prep for my Wednesday class, I will know better as I get into it, so.
Any other comments?
No, I didn't have a chance to welcome Commissioner Kempner, because I was not at the last meeting, so welcome.
Joe? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.